Here. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez. Is absent.
Okay, so I believe at this moment, I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez and our City Clerk Marlon Garcia. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No, Chief Deputy City Clerk, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here, thank you for that. At this moment, we have public communication, but I believe we also have an open session, study session. So I think it's in everybody's best interest if we put the presentation first and then we can have public communication. So, and I believe this is being presented by Ben, so Ben, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and the public, thank you very much for attending the meeting tonight. We're going to have a presentation regarding street vending, also sidewalk vending. And we put together a presentation. We've, we have guests here tonight that I'll introduce shortly. I wanted to make a brief, a few brief comments to the fact that we've done, staff has done a lot of outreach, a lot of research and education in this area of vending and mobile vending. We're not done yet, though, but we are, we were prepared and ready to get, kick off this discussion tonight and we will, tonight, we see this as more of a educational forum, discussion forum, and then return in the future with the beginnings of some recommendations if the council desires to change policies and, and, you know, revamp how we, how we regulate and work with vending in the city of Baldwin Park. So tonight really is about the educational and part of the, of the equation. We did, staff did conduct outreach, we met with vendors, both driving around the city and looking for them and, and speaking with them right then and there. We also had a meeting last week with about 20 vendors, right here at the fountain outside of this building. So there was a good amount of interest and we really appreciate the vendors and heeding our call to, to come meet with us and express their concerns. Tonight, we also have Kareem Satita from Kareem Karts in Los Angeles. And we also went to his facility to talk about, he, he's a leader in this industry of mobile vending and we learned about his private business and his role in the last 40 years, working in, in this industry. He definitely plays an important role. So we invited and we thank him for coming tonight to, to share his story and his words with us. And we also have the County Department of Public Health, Swadi Bhatt and James Dragon here from the Environmental Services Division, they regulate this industry, so thank you very much for coming. We'll hear a presentation from them as well. And we also have Curtis Wright, who is on our on-call list of legal services here at the city of Baldwin Park and Silver and Wright LLP is, is a leading firm in this area. And he has reviewed the state law in our local ordinance, vending ordinance, and he's prepared some comments. So if there are no questions or comments at this time, I'd like to ask Curtis Wright to kick us off and we'll go to the third slide in the presentation, please, in the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Am I? Oh, even while I'm talking? Okay.
It's on now.
You guys got me now?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, thank you, Ben, thank you, Council, for taking this opportunity to speak with me. So yes, as Ben indicated, I am a nuisance abatement prosecutor for cities and counties throughout the state. I work with Baldwin Park to help you guys with some of your nuisance enforcement. Mainly it's going to be associated with dangerous properties. But one thing that a lot of my clients are dealing with right now is, you know, well, since 2018, is SB 946 and the sidewalk vending aspect of, of street vending. And so Ben, you know, asked me to come here, speak to you today about some of the generals, about what's in your code and what the state law mandates. Baldwin Park had an existing street vending ordinance in place already before SB 946 was passed. And so SB 946 basically mandated that you had to start allowing sidewalk vending. Baldwin Park did modify its municipal code to address the requirements of SB 946. And it embedded that with its street vending ordinance, right? And so even though it's for the sidewalk and for pedestrian paths, it's inside of your street vending ordinance. You kind of have a two-fold approach to this. Based upon SB 946, you do have to allow sidewalk vending. There is no requirement for the street vending aspect of it. So Baldwin Park has kind of an interesting ordinance right now. You've passed the required, you know, and, you know, after the state mandated the sidewalk vending go in place, every jurisdiction needed to pass some sort of regulations because the state mandated that you had to allow certain things. But it wasn't like a comprehensive, you know, detailed structure of regulations that protected necessarily all the health, safety and welfare and, you know, and implications of introducing sidewalk vending. So every jurisdiction had to kind of go through really quick and try to pass an ordinance to address any, you know, health, safety and welfare concerns that might be associated with sidewalk vending. In most circumstances, cities adopted ordinances that were relatively restrictive, right? Because this is a new thing that's being introduced, we're not sure exactly what the effects are going to be. And so like most jurisdictions, Baldwin Park introduced an ordinance that complies with SB 946, but it is otherwise relatively restrictive. I kind of put a little list, list here for you guys, kind of talking about some of the requirements that go into your program. So one of the things that, things that Baldwin Park needs to consider and a lot of other jurisdictions are also considering is, are they going to try to relax these standards in some ways to facilitate more lawful sidewalk vending? The majority of the sidewalk vending that's still occurring in the state is still unlawful. It's not, it's not in compliance with SB 946 or the local ordinances. And so one of the things that, you know, Baldwin Park's going to have to decide is whether or not it wants to try to enforce the standard as is, right, which is going, you know, is going to limit how many people that are going to be able to lawfully operate as sidewalk vendors. Or whether or not it's going to try to selectively loosen its restrictions, perhaps adopt, instead of the, some of the prohibitions it has, adopt other ordinances that are designed to prevent the negative consequences from a health, safety and welfare standpoint, but at the same time, facilitate the activity. And so, you know, if you take a look at this, you'll, you'll kind of see basically what I'm talking about, about how, you know, how limited it'll be for people to be able to operate in this area. You've got limited spaces that they're allowed to operate in. There's a lot of requirements that go into it. And I listed permits and insurance required. But there's, there's like five different permits that they have to have if they're going, you know, if they're in like the most highly regulated class, which is going to be food. Merchandise doesn't require as, as many permits in training and handling. But if you're, if you're, you know, you're street tacos, you're taco vendors, they have, there's five different permits they have to get. And it's not all just from the city, it's from the county as well. And so those can be, it's space prohibitive, it's location prohibitive, it's cost prohibitive. And so as of right now, you're seeing the majority of your operations being unlawful because a lot of these individuals just don't have the ability to come into compliance, right? And so that's one of the things for the Council's consideration. Also, the Council, even though it's, or the city is not required to allow street vending, the city does have a street vending ordinance. And so you also, I kind of put a few points on that one there. But I, I think, and I don't have the statistics on this, but it does seem probably like most of your truck, you know, your, your food trucks are probably going to have a hard time complying with ordinance as well. While you guys are allowing it, it is, it is fairly restrictive. And so I guess one of the things that's going to be coming out of this, in my, in my role in this whole thing, will be if the Council wants to go in a different direction with this, my job will be to assist you with coming up with an ordinance that will effectuate your objective, while at the same time making sure that we keep all the health, safety and welfare concerns in mind so that we're supporting the activity the Council wants to support, but at the same time preventing the negative externalities that can, that can come from this. Does the Council have any questions for me?
So, I mean, I guess one of the biggest things that we're talking about, how, how, you know, there's artificial barriers all the way coming up from all the way from the state, right? So it's legal in a way, but in a way it's really not, right? It's just kind of an illusion because there's so many barriers or hurdles to get to for where you can get that permit. And so I think that's one of our concerns, right? How do we sit here and enforce an ordinance, you know, that we know is, is just not feasible to comply with? And I think that's one of our main concerns. I didn't, I don't know if this is the right question for you or somebody else, but one of the questions I've been asking is how do cottage permits come into play? You know, you can get, here in this LA County, you can get a cottage permit, make food at home, you know, selectively and then you can sell it. So is there a possibility of putting that into place so that we can facilitate this process for some of these vendors?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. There was, there's been cottage permits for a while, but also in 2018, the same time as the sidewalk vending, SB 946 came out, was the micro enterprise home kitchen. And that might have actually been, I think that might have actually predated sidewalk vending by a year or two. And so you do have, you know, which is kind of the same concept as this cottage concept, which is that you can basically prepare and sell food out of your home kitchen and a relaxation of those standards. And those, those would be separate programs. The cottage program, the micro enterprise home kitchen, the sidewalk vending, the street vending, they're all kind of separate programs. Now whether or not food can be prepared in those locations that can then be used for sidewalk vending is different than necessarily selling it out of the home. And, and so you're still going to have, if there's food preparation going on, they still have to go through the Department of Public Health and they have to get approved for that food preparation, even if their distribution system is sidewalk vending. So there, there is a way for those to interplay with each other, but as far as the actual distribution goes, you know, some of the, some of the idea with the sidewalk vending is that they want like the hot, freshly prepared food as opposed to the pre-prepared food. And that's really where we run into a lot of the obstacles, right? A pre-prepared food is actually much easier to vend than the, the food that is, you know, freshly prepared. And so without a doubt, one of the, one of the options for sidewalk vendors and is, is to get prepackaged or pre-prepared food. But I think a lot of the, a lot of the push on what's going into this is the fact that they want to keep their, their costs down and their overhead down by not paying for pre-prepared food. And so, and I think a lot of the allure of like the street taco is that it is fresh, freshly prepared. So while that is definitely something that can be taken into account for the overall program, it won't necessarily address all of the issues that Baldwin Park has currently seen with sidewalk vending.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, we do have a policy with regard to cottage operations. And it is in compliance with the state, and so I would say that, you know, we can review that policy and, you know, possibly bring it back at a later time as part of a larger discussion, I guess. But with regard to the street vending policy, the legal counsel, what I'm hearing is, one, we have a policy, an existing policy that is complying, complying with state law. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and two, most of the operations that are happening in the community would be considered unlawful because they don't have the, the correct permits. Is that what I heard?
I don't have empirical data on it, but the anecdotal data that I'm getting from your staff is yes.
Okay. So for me, I think, you know, I guess I would like to better understand what is, what, you know, when they say something is, is working, you know, then, then why fix it? So I'm trying to understand what are we trying to fix here? And, you know, kind of stay on, keep that as the focus. What are we trying to fix? Because it sounds like we're already in compliance with state law, so what are we trying to do here? You know, I, I'm glad that we're in compliance with state law and something that I have mentioned is it's important for me that any street vendor has the proper permits because our residents, our constituents would only assume that the city is allowing that operation to continue. And so therefore it should be, it should be safe and it should be, you know, promoting public health. But if there are street vendors that are operating unlawfully, then that's where I would ask, what are we doing to enforce, you know, our existing policy that's in compliance with state law? And, you know, and then are we considering alternative programs to help these individuals get the, the proper permits? Or are we going to limit, you know, I think what I heard earlier, are we going to limit the number of permits that the city issues? So I think those are some of the questions, you know, what are we trying to fix here? What are we trying to accomplish? So that's, that's kind of my overall question. Because I think it's important to regulate. I think it's important to regulate, make sure that we're not allowing, you know, operations to exist that don't have the proper permits or that are operating unlawfully.
Yeah, and so I think the, the question is not whether our ordinance is legal, it's how feasible it is, right? So we all agree that we're in compliance with the state, but what we're saying is that, you know, is it really fair to enforce something that we ourselves know is practically impossible to follow? And so I've kind of done my homework, I've compared, I've compared some of our ordinances, which I have up here and I'll mention them as we kind of start giving direction. But I've compared our ordinance to cities like Ontario and Los Angeles and it seems that ours is even much more stringent. I think ours even asked for extra questions that you wouldn't ask a regular person who's trying to get a business permit in the city. So those types of things, I think, you know, are things that we have to answer and if you want to keep them, that's fine, but you're going to have to defend it, right? And so if this is a business permit like any other, why are we trying to ask these people for more questions? I remember, you know, I wasn't here when this first came in, but I did speak in support of it as a resident. One of the things was, you know, how are we going to ask these street vendors for a social security, right? When, you know, we know that street vending is, is done by a certain demographic. So it's questions like that. I also have Unfinished Business, which is a full-on report done by Public Counsel in UCLA. And they also touch on these facts, how, you know, it's, it's practically impossible to follow state law, the county health department, and then still go through the municipal code and, you know, have an opportunity to have your enterprise. So it's not a matter of, you know, letting this be unregulated, it's, you know, putting a moratorium in place because we don't have, I think, the justification to defend this, which is completely legal and completely understandable. We've done it before and, you know, cities like Pomona did the same process when they legalized street vending. So I think that's the, that's the question that we're looking at, right? How do we have a, a fair and proper regulation of this industry? But I, so I don't, did you, I, I don't want to keep asking questions, but we have a lot, and I'm sure we all do, but I think you have a presentation, right?
Right, there's.
I, I'm just the first part of this, kind of giving a legal update. There are other presentations.
But before you leave, because let's walk back just very briefly to SB 946, which in effect would be the law by default if we had not passed a licensing process here within the city. And the state law would be the default regulation in the city, which would mean that street sidewalk vending, I should say, would be permissible. It's, the cities were given the opportunity to pass licensing requirements as a way of, of still be complying with the state law. But being in compliance with state law means that you allow sidewalk vending. Right? Now, there's, there's a question as to whether you are truly allowing street vending or whether the requirements are so onerous that in effect you're disallowing street vending or sidewalk vending. So we have to be careful with that as well.
Without a doubt.
Right? Okay, so Ben, I think, next person then.
Thank you for being here. Can you just repeat your, sorry, can you repeat your name real quick and then the agency you're with?
Curtis Wright, I'm with Silver and Wright LLP. We are your nuisance abatement special counsel.
Okay, nice. Yeah, sorry, you didn't have any slides to show us, correct? Just these, nice, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next, we're going to have James Dragon, the Branch Director of the County Department of Public Health, present. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Sure, Honorable Mayor and Council.
The next slide, please.
Very thankful to Community Development for inviting us to this discussion. It's happening all over the state and California, so glad to be here. But Public Health's mission is to protect public health, that's our number one goal. With regard to food businesses, we do that in a couple of ways. We have certain concerns that we look at based on state law for food facilities. So to keep the food safe, how we approach that is for mobile food vending specifically, we, we look at our regulated mobile food businesses, those are the catering trucks, the carts that are, have permits. And we do regular inspections to ensure that they're compliant with California state law. With regard to the sidewalk food vending operations that are not permitted, we respond to complaints and work with the local jurisdictions in response to those complaints to try to, and we also pass out information on, outreach information on how vendors can get a permit. And we do recognize it is an onerous process for someone who's not familiar with the industry standards and how to build a cart. I just wanted to mention as a side note, a couple of things were brought up with cottage food and the micro enterprise home kitchens. Those discussions, cottage food is allowable under state law. There are certain food items that the state specifies you can make, and these are food items that are, don't require refrigeration to keep it safe. It's their, not, what we call non-potentially hazardous foods. Micro enterprise home kitchens is also in state law, however, at this time, LA County has not opted in on that. And that discussion's still ongoing. So I just wanted to mention that because I heard it mentioned earlier. From, from a standpoint of public health, the SB 946, it applies to all vendors, whether you sell clothing, electronics or food. And I, I, a lot of, a good percentage of vendors are selling food. And that's where we have a concern with the public health permit. So our process, you know, California Retail Food Code does allow food to be sold either at a fixed location, a mobile food conveyance, or from a community event. So focusing just on carts, for a cart to get a permit, the, the vendor or the builder of the cart would submit a plan to us, we would review that plan and ensure that it meets state, state code. And it depends on what the vendor is selling. The design of the cart and requirements by state laws are completely menu-driven. So if you're just selling a prepackaged product, that cart's very minimal requirements. If you're, you have limited food preparation on that cart, the requirements are quite a bit more. And the majority of our carts are pretty large carts that are usually pulled by a vehicle of some kind. So we review that plan, once that plan is approved, we find that it meets the state law, we provide that food, that plan back to the vendor and then we allow them, they go ahead and build the cart. And once that cart is built, we do a final inspection. If, if everything works out per plan, we issue a permit to that cart. And at that point, it's permitted and then we do our routine inspections after that. One of the requirements for carts is that they have an association with a commissary. And that's for them to bring that cart to for cleaning, sanitation, draining the waste tank and filling the water tank with potable clean water, food storage, and if they do some food prep, if they do that at the commissary, those kind of things, they're required to report to a commissary. Another important note on carts is that when they're, they're out operating, they are required to, if they're at one location for more than an hour, they are required to have access within 200 travel distance feet to a restroom, an approved restroom. On the slide, I wanted to bring up community events. This is a option that might be available to vendors who currently set up on the sidewalk, grew like a pop-up restaurant. And, and just to make a note, those, the pop-up style restaurant, under state law, we are not allowed to permit something like that. It's not permissible under state law. It would be through a cart, a fixed location or a mobile, I'm sorry, or a community event. And a community event might be a good option, an event that is approved by the city where you can have food vendors operating. There are restrictions. However, you would need a sponsor to sponsor that event. And the, the sponsor would ensure that there's restrooms available, trash services, if they need utensil washing, that that's available. And then each food vendor that wants to participate in that event, they would submit an application for that event as well. And they would have a booth set up with their cooking equipment. And there's requirements for the booth, but it's very similar to what you might see on a sidewalk setup. However, it would be enclosed with screening or some kind of temporary booth setup. So that, I wanted to bring it up as an option, under state law, that's allowed to operate 25 days out of a, any 90-day period. Inspections and issuance of permits. So once we approve a cart, as an example, and it's, and we permit it, they carry a public health permit where we are required to inspect them annually. Depending on their, you know, the type of food service they have, it's either one inspection or a couple inspections per year. So currently, we're working with local city enforcement and local law enforcement when we're talking about the unpermitted vending that we get complaints on. And so we work with those agencies. We always work with local law enforcement, that's for the safety of our team to go out. Many of these complaints, the operations are after hours and in the evening. So we always go with law enforcement for that purpose of safety. Sidewalk vending is a multi-jurisdictional issue involving not just public health requirements, but, you know, there are other requirements for local departments such as a business license, street and sidewalk use issues, storm drink, issues with draining of waste. There might be some other zoning issues. So we like to work with our local cities as we address this issue. Our statistics, the number of permits we have in LA County specifically for carts is currently have 1,557 permitted carts in LA County. 924 of those are what we would consider low risk, where the, the food operation on that cart is not what we would consider high, high risk. They're doing minimal food handling and then we have 633 high, high-risk carts. And to, to note, when we issue a permit for a cart, it's not for a specific city or location. When we issue a public health permit, that vendor can operate that cart per our regulations anywhere in LA County that we inspect. And that's 85 out of the 87 cities here in LA County, or 88 cities. There's only Long Beach, Vernon and Pasadena who have their own public health departments. So, and question came, comes up about foodborne illness complaints. And we do receive them for all types of businesses. And if I'm looking at our data, in 2020, we received 37 foodborne illness complaints. I'm sorry, we received 34 in 2020. So far in 2021, we received 37 foodborne illness complaints. And I don't, please let me know if you have any questions or.
Were those complaints in the city of Baldwin Park?
I, I don't, I don't know of any that were specifically in the city of Baldwin Park.
In regards to those complaints, those are just, again, usually driven by consumers?
Yes.
Right, and it's not, again, based on, but you have no data in the sense of when you go out and do your spot inspections of how many people are in compliance and non-compliance and compliance?
As far as our regulated food vendors, businesses?
Yes.
I, I don't have specific data. I mean, any inspection we have, we make, could result in a number of violations or, or none. It just depends on what we see.
The majority of the folks, to your knowledge and experience, are those individuals more likely to be in compliance than out of compliance?
I would say generally, most of the regulated food industry that we inspect, they're in compliance. They may have a few minor issues here and there.
Right.
We have certain issues we call good retail practices that they may be out of there, but I would say majority are in compliance.
Right, so, so one of the things in my view is, you know, it helps to regulate and more importantly, help bring in these folks that are, you know, unpermitted and so forth. Because again, they, they're now being held to the similar standard that we have restaurants and everyone else out in the communities, you know, eating and so forth, right? So, I mean, I, I understand the, the economic factors and so forth, and I think there's ways of, you know, helping and mitigating, you know, folks that are currently unlawful, and as, as was stated by the previous speaker. But really, for me, it's, it's a health issue, right? Not only is it a health issue, but also a blithe issue. And so, you know, we can, we can certainly address both of those issues, I think, in a compassionate way that also allows for individuals to be, you know, micro entrepreneurs, right? And that's really what we're trying to do. Because again, it's not fair, I think, regardless of our position, that we don't, you know, apply the, you know, the laws. Now, there are circumstances in which, you know, if somebody chooses not to go get a ten number, right? Because to someone to say that they can't get a, you know, provide a social security number, if that's our process. if that's our process, then we have to change that process to allow, you know, individuals to get a tin number and our put supportive, a supportive structure that gives them the best, you know, roadmap to success, right? Obviously, you guys have worked with the city of Los Angeles, and that was a very, very big issue there. And so far as I understand it, it's generally working for the city. And, you know, we see that in various aspects, you know, in highly, you know, populated Latino communities, South LA, East LA, Boyle Heights, mid, mid, mid Wellshire areas and so forth. So there is a solution, right, in which they've been able to bring about change in regulations and compliance for some folks. Now, I'll be perfectly honest, I don't think everyone's going to want to follow that because that means it's more money out of their pockets or whatever the case may be. But those are folks that, you know, if they don't try, they don't want to do, then guess what? They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be in this business whatsoever. And because, you know, if, if they're not willing to try to be part of the solution, you know, and we're providing, you know, and we remove the barriers as we move forward, right? I think currently, I think there are some barriers. But if we remove those barriers moving forward, then those absolutely should not be, you know, allowed in our city for the various public safety and quality of life issues that come along with that. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So, before you leave, so Baldwin Park is a seven square mile city, right? So we're, we're not, we're not the smallest, but we're not the biggest either. So in a city like ours, there is no commissary. So what happens in that instance?
Well, the, the commissaries, in other words, vendors who vend here in Baldwin Park don't have to report to a commissary within Baldwin Park. There's, they can report to other commissaries. We don't have that requirement that has to be specifically in the city.
There might be one in Irwindale, I believe. I'm not sure if it's for food vendors. I think there's one in, there's one in City of Industry for sure. And I know that there's a lot of, a lot of the ice cream trucks parked there. Blocking distance, right? So be a matter of them having to figure out how they're going to transport that vehicle back and forth.
Correct. And the commissary, they have to have a commissary that can support their type of business.
Okay. And then, so then, the next question, you know, so I see, you know, the fees for the mobile food facility permits can range from anywhere from like $300 to $1,000, depending on.
For the permit?
Yeah, right?
Correct, yes. That's for the annual permit for depending on what type of a cart or a mobile food facility it is.
And then is there any other, any other fees that they have to pay to the county?
Well, if it's a brand new business that's going through a plan check, yes, there, there's a plan check fee for us to review their plans and approve those plans. And I believe currently that's $746.
So do you know on average, what one person would be spending on, just at the county, just at the, at the health department?
For, yeah, for approval and eventual permit, depending on which kind of cart they end up with, it would be $746 for the plan check review. And then the annual permit would be anywhere from the mid 300s up to, I believe, if it's a catering vehicle, it may be as high as $900 if it's a catering truck.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. I don't know if this may be a question for you or maybe for Mr. Wright, but are we able to limit how many street vending permits we are, the city gives out?
That might be a question for Mr. Wright.
Yeah, no worries, thank you.
You can't have just a strict limit, but you can put health, safety and welfare limitations on the number of permits. So, or not the number of permits, but how many permits are being deployed or used at a certain time. So there's ways to, I guess, effectively limit it without necessarily limiting the number of permits.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to do that geographically?
Yeah, so that's, some of my jurisdictions, that's what they do, right? So it's not that there's a limited number of permits that will go out. It will be a limited number of permits that can be used in a certain area at a certain time.
Appreciate that.
May I have a question?
Yes, may I approach him?
Aside from the health permits, what is the city charging for city permits? Are we charging for a city permit as well?
Sorry, the volume's a little bit low. Can you repeat your question?
I said, aside from the health permit that they have to pay, as the city, are we also charging a fee? And what is that fee for a permit to be in our city? Ben, that's probably it, Ben?
Yes, the city, yes, an answer to the question of what are the, essentially the city fees. There's a one, there's a one-time encroachment permit that's required for $175. A business license is required, which is $136 with an annual renewal fee of $71. It's not a fee, but liability insurance is required. And we're looking to see what that generally costs, so we understand that. There are also some other requirements. They must have a California seller's permit number, which I don't think there's a cost to get that, but obviously that's the vehicle to pay tax to the state. And I think that's required by the county as well. Completion of a food handler course, and, and then we just need general information about, you know, the business and what they're selling and so forth. But those are the fees.
So those are, those are quite a lot of fees. Just to get the health permit alone, that's, that's a lot of money. And then on top of that, we have our city permits. And then you have the courses that they need to take. Do they have to pay for that as well?
The question was for that, was a question for the commissary?
The food handler's permit.
The food handling course they have to take. Do they pay for that?
It's required under California retail food code for food handlers to have the certificate. It's not provided locally by LA County, but it's a, a test. There's a lot of online private companies that offer that course. I, I don't know for sure, but I think the amount I heard, $30 is probably accurate for a food handler card. A food manager safety certificate probably is a little bit more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions, we can ask Mr. Kareem Satida to approach. And, and thank you again for visiting us, Kareem. And I think it's timely, he can address the industry and maybe some other questions and, and bring the, sort of the private sector view of this, since we've mostly heard now from the government agencies. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm so pleased to be here in the city of Baldwin Park to assist you and help you to legalize and approve a street vendor in the city. Actually, we, when I first heard that, and it take me back to 15 years ago, when the street vendor in the city of Los Angeles is not legal. And we tried to fight it left and right to legalize it. And finally, last years, we okayed and approved the street vending in the city of Los Angeles. All these years, the city has been collecting permit and license. And actually, in the law, vending in the city of Los Angeles is illegal. Now, I'm here to help you and assist you with this and anything in my power. I've been in this industry almost 38 years. I own three commissary. I own a manufacturing facilities. We manufacture from a little small prototype carts, fruit carts, to all the way to a mobile kitchens, 50 foot and up. Actually, for my introduction here, I will talk about commissary. How important the commissary to this industrial is very important. We have to, we have to comply with all the rules and the regulation from the state and county health department, which is, you will never issue a permit to you without a commissary facilities. You have to have a commissary facilities. Why you have a commissary facilities? To keep control of those vendor, wash and clean your, 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 your vehicle and approvals, facilities. And also they supply you with food and everything is being under control from the health department. Secondly, commissary is the most important thing for the vendor. Commissary is, is, is one stop, you know? So the vendor come to the commissary, wash his car, clean his car, bark it overnight. If you need to plug your car overnight with electricity, you can have the facilities, you know, to provide electricity for you to plug all, all your refrigeration, everything, your food will be in the right temperatures in the refrigerator. The next day you come, you have your truck ready or food or, or carts ready, you go to work in the street. I've been, heard everybody just been talking about street vending and sidewalk vending. It's completely different. We've been working with this for years, right? We have two law here. We have Cal Code, it's been approved 2007. We have Carriage Law, it's been implemented two years ago and three years ago. It's actually it's been in, it's about four years ago, but just been enforced it two years ago to have the carriage law. And we tried to come up with prototype vehicles to work in the sidewalk. We can do it. We are not like New York. State of California here, we put the rules, they put the regulations, but didn't know what the side, what the side, the sidewalk in the city. Each city read even Cal Code, the definition of Cal Code differently. I'm going to get you to this, it's very important because when we talk about street vending, street vending, this is will be allowing to can have food trucks, you can have a food trailers. And especially these days during the COVID, the industry has been booming, it's been going crazy. Because, you know, the luck of the restaurants and the people, they have some issue. Most of the restaurant owners, they want to work from a food trailers or food trucks in outside field area. So then they will not be liable for any sickness or anything to his client. So it's, the industry has been going, has been growing, has been going, you know, from zero to 100%, maybe 200%, maybe 300%. I cannot predict that. But for us as a manufacturer and all the manufacturer in the state is going crazy now. Go to the section, which is we said, street, sidewalk vending. Sidewalk vending, you cannot, because if any vehicles, like, for example, LA County Health Department are here, you know, grill carts. We approved grill carts since 2007, it's been approved. And grill carts, you have to have some specific there. You cannot make them smaller. At least it has to be 10 feet by five and a half feet. Plus, in Cal Code, they tell you, okay, so we don't want to dirty the sidewalk. So let's open, make a floor mat. So then the operator can work on the top of that floor mat. He will not dirty the street or the sidewalk with the grease and all the, the, the food residue what they have in there. It wouldn't be happening, you know, for, for a public safety. And, and so many regulations to have these vehicles with all this equipment in the sidewalk. So very difficult to approve it in the sidewalk. Let's, we, we try to work it so many time, it wouldn't happen. Maybe in the near futures, the state will compromise this and we've come up with a prototype, a small prototype like New York, like New York, like city of Vancouver, city of Toronto, Canada, and all the stuff, you know? So I've been visiting all this, this city to get some idea exactly what they have and how they do it and how, how they're running in there. Here, it's, 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 in, in County of Los Angeles, they working so hard to fight illegal vendor. Illegal vendor is a big issue. For example, a person spent all his saving, all his money, you know, to get in a vehicle or get in a truck or get in a trailers and to working, and they have three, four, five, six of them, illegal vendor surrendering him, surrendering his business, taking his business. One, that person, he spent all his life saving, all his life in there. He pay permit, he pay city license, he pay insurance. All, he, he comply, he comply with all the regulation, whatever, whatever they asking for, he comply with it. And somebody else coming illegal and they do vending illegal and they take his business away. Also, this is how we're going to do it. We come up with the solutions to fight illegal street vendor with, with, with the sweep program through LA County. It's, it's, it's those people is the mafia. They doing it after hours and the minute the sweep program left, and they come back and doing it over and over. And then they've been watching all over the places and you cannot fight them. You cannot even, you cannot even control them. This is, I want to brought this issue to Baldwin Park because from the business perspective. The business perspective is, it's good for the people that want to do business. They want to conduct a business, real business in the city. And you helping a small minority, small business guy. He come in, he collect all this money, all his life, and he want to start a small business from a little small cars like this. One day he will grow up, maybe he will buy a food trucks, maybe he will buy a food trailers. And also the city make revenue from him, you know? He pay business license, he pay insurance, he pay all the stuff in there. So he help the industry with this. Regarding, we came up 10 years ago, we come up with idea, it's a food truck and, and retail expo. I create this, I invented this. And I said, let me make a small event. I rent a park and I invite a lot of people to come and, you know, to participating in this. It became very successful, became very, you know, it's a very, very, you know, successful program. And then the city came and approached me and they say, okay. And the community redevelopment in city of Los Angeles, they came and approached me and said, okay, let's do it together. And we doing it in a professional manner. And we doing it, we're, we're holding this for the last seven years in LA Trade Tac. Attending, it's a lot of people attending. And then for the last three years, we've been doing seminars, teaching the vendor how to bend. And we bringing all agency for them, how you start to put, how you start a, 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 a food vending in the city of Los Angeles, how you start, you get financing, how you get the health department, how you get business license, how you get suppliers. And we put this together to help the industrial to put, to move to the right track. Because it's time for us to fight them and keep, you know, bring the stick and keep punching him all the time. No, we try to educate them and have him to do the business in the right way. And it became very, very successful program.
Kareem, is this a handout that came from you? This one that has the samples of.
Yes, I have a bunch of shoes here I can handle it to you, but just, you know, this is coming from our, our facilities, yes.
Mr. CEO, that handout staff created, several of those pictures you see in that are Kareem's carts.
If he could give us an idea of the price of each ones?
Okay, the price of all these vehicles is variously. Fruit carts start from $2,500, you can be in business with the fruit carts. Add to that cost, $2,500 to manufacture a small fruit carts. One, plan check from the health department, from LA County Health Department, $746. Okay? Second, permit you operate from County of Los Angeles, when they issued a permit for you, it's about almost variously about $800, $800. And then you go to the city and you get a business license. So it's variously from $130, $30 all the way to $400. So we're talking about, about $5,000 to be in business with the small fruit carts. Secondly, go with the steaming hard dog carts. Before Cal Code, we used to have about 20, 30 different design of hard dog carts. Now with the regulation and the restriction, because they asking us everything in the, in the, in the unit, it has to be N S F certified. So it has to have refrigerators, commercial refrigerators, commercial steam tables, commercial water heaters, and all this is, it, it, it put the cost a little bit higher. So we down to one cost for a steaming hard dog cart start from $9,000 to $15,000. Food truck variously, just based in the size and based in the vehicle and based in the year of the vehicle start from $50,000 all the way to $100,000. Food trailers, food trailers start from $35,000 all the way to $60, $70,000, based in the size, based in the equipment, based in, you know, what type of food you're going to serve from there. It's a little bit different. Churros carts started from $3,000 all the way to $7,000. And we have also a, a, a different, call it grill carts. Grill carts, which is, this is a very popular and very. Grill carts, which is, this is a very popular and very convenient to everybody here because most of the population is Latinos and everybody like to grill bacon hot dogs. Now they doing it from a small grill because they doing it illegally, but LA County and the state approve Cal Code to doing it from a vehicle, even carriage law, you know, so carriage law, they give you a lot of capability to do it with non-potential hazard food, you know, you sell it, but you have to serve it from approval source. Approval source, this is mean approval vehicle, you know, permit it from LA County and you can cook the food in your home and you can take it there and you just serve it, but with regulation, regulation and restrictions. Now, prices for this variously, it depend what do wanna serve, what do wanna have, they have tons of different, I'm sorry, tons of different type of food to be served. Now, is, you know, if you want to look food trucks in LA, just look at that line, food trucks in LA, you seeing in each location about sixty, seventy trucks and all of it different various food, it's all gourmet food. The whole industry changed, a while ago, they used to have those, what you call it, rochocochi trucks, which is, the food has been served to you and you don't know what's inside it there, you cannot see anything, you just see the blade is coming out to you. Now, everything is being cooked in the front view with a protection glass, you know, so then you can see everything.
Kareem, could we talk afterwards about the expo that you mentioned, the expo that you sponsor in LA, can we talk about that afterward? Ben, were we going to have a, one of the vendors speak? We're running out of time.
Yes, thank you and thank you, Kareem, thank you.
Thank you.
We have more time, we'll have more time in the future and we really appreciate. Yes, we did invite the street vendors to come tonight. Si gustan, si eres alguien que vende, tiene negocio y vende comida aquí en, o fruta, comida aquí en Baldwin Park, nos encantaría que vengan aquí a platicar con nosotros, con el acá de los regidores. Por favor, habla de sus preocupaciones o sus necesidades. Este, gracias. Vamos a empezar con ella y luego usted sigue, gracias.
Hello, buenas noches, soy Edith. No sé si lo, you guys want me to speak in English or Spanish for the vendors?
English is better.
Okay. So, yeah, my name is Edith and I'm a food, a street vendor here in the city of Baldwin Park with my mother, she's sitting right there. We sell churros, funnel cakes, deep fried Oreos, deep fried bananas and, you know, we got invited to this meeting about the food vendors and yeah, there is, you know, everything sounds nice and so simple and easy and I wish it was like that, but reality is, is that as far as for my mom and ma and I, we're really starting from nothing, so basically, all of those prices and all of those fees, we really can't meet those fees yet, you know? So, that's the reason why we're still, we're doing it illegally on the street, because eventually we do wanna do it the right way, you know? If we had the means and the money available, we would definitely purchase a truck. As far as for what we sell, it's not that expensive, cuz I've already looked into it, it's about maybe, we're looking to thirty-five to forty-thousand dollars with all the permits required and everything, but we, like I said, we don't meet that, that money yet, you know? It's during this pandemic, time has been a little bit difficult for us as far as money wise, cuz my mom got laid off of work, you know, so we were thinking, we gotta do something to bring the money in, you know? So, this, we decided to do the street vending, we saw a lot of vendors out on the streets doing it, so we decided to take advantage of the situation, you know, that's the truth. But, like I said, you know, it's, we don't meet that amount of money, so what I was here for was to basically ask, you know, if there's any way that you guys can maybe help us out, you know? Maybe provide like a city, like a street where we can, you know, legally do it with your guys' permit, if we're, I'm willing to pay anything, like a fee that is, you know, in our budget, that we're able to afford to help out the city, because we do live in the city, you know, I grew up here, I went to high school here, I went to elementary school here, you know, and now we're doing this, you know? So, yeah, like that's, that's pretty much one of my concerns, you know, so if you guys do enforce those, you know, the city to go out and kick us out, you know, we're, we're basically left with nothing, you know, we're, we're gonna have to look for ways of bringing in money and so, yeah, that's, that's all I can say, you know? As far as the community in Baldwin Park, they have actually, we've had a really positive response. A lot of them walk up to us and they say, you know what, we're, we're really glad that you guys are here, we needed this, we always have to travel all the way to Armani or, you know, East LA or Whittier and we have it like right around the corner, we could just literally walk out here, you know? So, the, the feedback from the community is actually very, very positive, you know? I was telling a lot of them to come and support us, you know, about this meeting, but, so, yeah, that's all I can say, my name is Edith and that's it.
Edith, if I have a few questions really quickly, if you don't mind? Thank you, thank you for your story. Now, given everything that you've mentioned and you say you wanna be part of the solution, would you be open to getting, you know, the food handler's permit? Actually, it's closer to seven or eight dollars.
Yeah, definitely, you know what, as far, as far as that, I actually worked at Subway for over, over like fifteen or twenty years.
You've gotten that in the past.
So, and I was a manager there for more than ten years, so I actually do have like the manager certificate, food handler certificate, which is a five-year, but yeah, definitely.
And the other thing is, would you be open, you know, what you're saying is you don't have the capital to do what, you know, what the capital is, so would you be, you know, if there was a micro loan available to you, is that something that, you know, you would consider? Because again, it sounds like you're doing well for yourself and it's great and I, you know, I applaud you, but it also sounds that, you know, it's, you know, you need the upfront capital, right? That's, you know, to pay for that.
That's basically what's like.
But would you be willing to take out a loan from, you know, like if the city were to give a small startup, you know, micro entrepreneur loan to do that, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. No, this helps for, as we discuss various solutions, not only for yourself but others, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Odilon Cervantes Parada y yo venía a hablar para, por mi experiencia propia y por mí. Yo me dedico a vender elotes en la calle, raspados, chicharrones.
Disculpe, disculpe.
Sí.
Voy, voy a llamar al intérprete.
Okay.
Un momentito, por favor.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Odilon Cervantes Parada, me dedico a vender elotes en la calle, raspados, chicharrones y todo ese tipo de productos. Y pues todos suenan muy bien y quieren ayudar a la comunidad de vendedores ambulantes, pero pues, por mi experiencia propia, los clientes compran porque uno llega a su casa. No anda caminando, escuchando carritos y anda llegando de casa en casa, es por eso que los clientes nos compran. Si ustedes me paran en una esquina o una calle, el cliente no va a ir y mi negocio no da para eso. En sí, en sí, mi experiencia propia no creo que pueda yo seguir continuando con ese tipo de trabajo.
Señor, perdón, vamos a permitir que traduce. Perdón, gracias.
¿Me dedico a vender elotes, raspados?
¿Mi nombre es Odilon? Odilon Cervantes. Eh, I, I.
Can you speak into the mic?
Raspados, elotes, chicharrones.
Raspados, which are snow cones, pork rinds, corn, corn on the cob.
Los clientes compran porque pues en sí, uno llega a su casa.
And the customers will buy, they buy because while one gets home.
Solamente es así como uno pudiera venderles, si me paran en una esquina o una calle, no habría modo de poderles despachar porque el cliente no va a donde están los negocios pequeños.
And that's.
Elote de cinco, dos, elote dos cincuenta, de un dólar.
And that's the only way that people, you know, will buy, be able to afford this here because at other establishments, it costs more money, it's like, so.
Mi negocio no da para como una troca de dos, tres mil dólares, mil dólares mi negocio en sí, en sí, no da para eso.
My, my, my business, we don't make enough money to purchase a truck that's, you know, costs five-thousand dollars.
Pues, si se me hace muy complicado sacar los permisos y todo lo que piden, que yo traté de hacer en la Ciudad de La Fuente y no se pudo.
So, it's very difficult for me to comply with all the requirements or permits, because I tried to do that in the city of La Puente and I wasn't able to do it.
Noventa, noventa y nueve por ciento que es, que no lo van a dar el permiso.
I know that ninety-nine percent, I'm sure that it's, the permit is not going to be issued.
Y pues, yo más que más quisiera seguir trabajando, pero si no se puede, tendría que buscar la otra forma de seguir ingresando dinero para mi hogar.
And so, I could find another way to earn money, but if I, you know, and maybe get that permit, but if not, that I would have to find another way to earn money to support my, my family.
Y pues, si me paran en una esquina o me lo requieren que esté yo en cierto lugar, el customer no va a llegar, el cliente no va a llegar.
So, if they stop me, you know, at a quarter or something, then the customer, the, is not going to come to buy from me.
Y pues tengo quince años haciéndolo y no, como dijo aquí ahorita, dijeron que se enfermaron treinta y siete personas, pero yo, desde el tiempo que tengo lo haciendo, nunca me he enterado que un cliente mío se haya enfermado por mis productos que vendo.
Yeah, so, you know, I've been doing this for fifteen years and you've talked about sixty-some people that complained about getting food poison, but no one has ever complained since the time that I've been in business selling.
Y ahorita vinieron, también hablaron de carritos y eso, pero pues, hablaron como tipo de carritos de frutas, de otro tipo de comercio, pero no específicamente de la mayoría de personas de los que estamos aquí, de vendedores ambulantes de elotes.
Yeah, so, you talked about some of the different carts, food vending carts, but not of the type of, you know, the vending that I do, which is I sell corn on the cob.
Eso es todo, eso es todo.
And that's all.
Gracias, muy amables.
Thank you so much.
Alguien, alguien más que quiere hablar de los vendedores ambulantes? If not, so at this moment, I'll open up public communication, chief deputy city clerk.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We have one speaker who signed up by the name of Thomas Carey.
Good to see you again, Thomas, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a long time, they're still fooling around with the street vending stuff. If you wanna save money, you should go to work somewhere and save money for carts or anything else. How many jobs are available in this country? A million jobs at least, all these openings all over the place. Someplace are paying eighteen dollars an hour. You're supposed to save up to work towards something, seems people want everything given to them. These health inspectors cost the county a lot of money. A lot of these street vendors and stuff show up after hours. It's a, I come from San Bernardino, it's a big problem over there. And they're not just little carts, they're big elaborate things that take over a whole corner, or they're on somebody's property in the middle of the night illegally and there's liability issues there, as there would be with propane tanks, that's why there's permits for those things. You know how dangerous a propane tank can be if it ignites, talking about shrapnel. There's reasons there's permits and stuff. If you keep watering stuff down and watering our laws down here, we're gonna be overrun with everything. So, they're letting those people flood across that border over there, they're gonna be doing these things too. Now, the health department says they're only there until a certain time, that the police are gonna enforce it after hours. The police are busy with emergencies, they answer emergency calls first. The street vending is the least of their concerns. That's the way it is with the police, they have to answer emergency calls. Unless somebody's being murdered at the food thing, it's not happening, they're not gonna go there, cuz they don't have time. We all know that, I don't know who's BSing who here with this, but the, 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 the county inspectors, they need to be working in the evening hours, can't believe they'd all only work during the day. Why can't they work from three to midnight, when these illegal vendors are out there? Why they have to work daytime only? It just sounds to me like, oh, it's just a whitewash, the same old thing. They're gonna say they're gonna do something, but really, when it comes right down to it, nothing's gonna be done. You threaten them with fines, they don't have any money to pay it, so how you gonna make them pay? It's the same with everything, especially here in California. They watered everything down and it's like, who are they kidding? It doesn't matter what the ticket is for, they don't pay it and they have no recourse and everybody knows it. I don't know if there's a time limit, but.
Yes, your time is up, thank you.
Oh, I got it, okay.
It's three minutes.
Okay.
One of the things that we're talking about, the food vendors, okay, the food vendors are causing a big problem, they're taking over the sidewalks, I'm just gonna mention a few of them. The one next to IHOP in front of McDonald's, next to Jack in the Box, Subway and everything. They have to pay permits, they have to pay insurance, but they park themselves right there, take over the street, the sidewalk. And what the city is doing, the city is not doing anything. And the biggest thing is right here on Walgreens, right there in the corner, there's a fire hydrant there and they parked themselves right there at the sidewalk. Some friends of mine called me up, they told me, hey, we can't even go through the street, we have to go through the street, we can't go through the sidewalk, you know? Why are we permitting all this? I've called the county and the county health department, they told me, if they would get police protection to come over, they'll take care of it. Why should we have the county come over when we have a department that can do it? Would you allow, like I told you last meeting, we got handcuffs on our inspectors, on our police department. The Walgreens, taquero that's right there, I called the police department, they didn't do anything. They're right there, is there some fire right there? How is the fire department gonna go to it? Read the rules from the county and the city, you have to be certain amount of space between the fire hydrant, the bus stops, the schools and everything, but we got them all over. I've called the county and that's what they told me. If we go in there, we need police department protection and they are willing to come in, you know? I reported maybe twenty food vendors and taqueros in the past month and that's what they told me. If the police department can give us protection, we'll go in there. Thank you.
I wanna, first of all, state a fact that the county guy that was here today is clueless. If he's trying to tell you that he's had no complaints, he's a liar, because we've talked to the county department here in Baldwin Park and we've talked to LA. They wanna ignore it, fine, it's on you. Second of all, if these people, the only way they can make a living is to sell food off of a truck, that's BS. Second of all, if these people, the only way they can make a living is to sell food off of a truck, that's BS. There's tons of jobs out there right now offering. Go to work. Get your job and go to work. If you want to be a self-employed person, you have to save up and pay for it. I pay over $1,700 just for a county permit for a fire department. Hernandez, you're going to give me a loan for that because I just don't have the money to pay for that? You're going to use city money to do that? How generous of you. It ain't your money. I don't want you to use my tax dollars on that. Now, you go in here, these vendors are illegal. Ron Garcia brings in this poor me stuff. There's no poor me. Tell me, what money do you make on these vendors? Not a dime. The guy up here says, oh, well, you get money on the insurance. You get money on the permits. Really? That's it? My business comes in here, you got sales tax, you got permits that we come in and do. Now, you want to cater to these people because I can't do anything else but sell food on the street? And block the sidewalks that handicapped people can't go down with a wheelchair? We widened Main Street so we could make wheelchairs go down it. And now they want to block it. You guys have three things that have to happen. You got to have a city license, health permit and proof of insurance. It's a no-brainer. Enforce the law that we have here now. I don't even know why we're wasting all staff time on this. It's written. It's there. Enforce it. This stuff allowing these people to come in, if you enforce it, they'll just move to another city. Fine. Let somebody else handle it. But don't put it on us. And you've got all these restaurants paying for all the health permits and all the other stuff? And now you're going to let a guy cook food on the street? They don't have cleaning utensils. They don't have a floor mat. Have you seen one cart with a floor mat? Have you seen one cart with a trash can to put trash in? No. Where does the guy go to the restroom when he's standing there all day in the hot sun? He does, you know where he goes? Behind the trees. This is not right. And if you want Baldwin Park to be the dump, so be it. But I'll move out of it. This is not the city that we need to have here. You need to clean it up. And the only way you can clean it up is to get these guys out of here. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anybody else looking to speak? If not, at this moment, I will close public communication. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Apple, Apple's from missions, working in the business for almost forty years in Baldwin Park. I'm angry with those guys. You have to make those people require licenses to work, selling, or they sell. Okay, but you have to have a healthy basis where they got to go to the bathroom, have insurance, everything. If we pay too many taxes on properties, even today, I receive my, I pay them both for twenty thousand, ten thousand dollars a year. A lot of money. And have to, you have to, with inspectors to check around, it's called enforcement. Because there's a lot of people working in the street, mechanics, we, we losing, we are losing customers too. We have to pay our tax too. Okay, and we have to enforce this law because for us, it's very hard to make money. And taxes are too expensive. Okay, and then they said, they were saying it's okay. They have to check around who's, the people who working around selling a lot or whatever without permits. There's propane tanks, it's dangerous. The propane tanks blow it. It's dangerous. The umbrella, half of the umbrella. If there's a lot of wind, half of the umbrella goes away, they kill somebody. Okay, and, uh, be careful when you say something, because you say something, I just not agree with that. Then there's going to be more and more coming to the city. It is getting worse and worse. We're not cleaning the city. We are getting worse, more dirty. My street where, and my business where I work, it's getting worse, a lot of graffiti, too many combless. I never see, I never, if I do it, you are doing something for, for us to clean the city. You have to do something because it's, the city here is ugly and ugly. There's too much trash. Okay? That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I will move to close public communication. So, you know, thank you, Ben, for having this information and thank you for everybody coming out. I know that this is a, obviously a long discussion, but I think we're moving towards something that's possible. So, the main, I think we keep getting this question asked, so I don't think anybody's, the council itself is not looking to give a freebie, you know. And I reiterated that many, many times, that, you know, this, there's so many barriers in this thing that you have to ask, you have to, you have to ask yourself if we really are allowing this as state law wanted to, instead of creating all these artificial barriers. That's my concern. There is, you know, I've spoken to a lot of residents and a lot of residents do like the street vending, you know, and you have to wonder why. And I think for one, yes, it's a sign of the pandemic. There's a sign that people need work. On the other side, it's a sign that Baldwin Park is a food desert. You know, where do you go? You go Jack in the Box, Starbucks, Raising Cane's, The Habit. You got all these fast food joints in the city. We don't have any real places to go and eat quality food, something that's good, something that tastes well. I've seen some of the BPPD officers eating and they're fine with it. They're still out there, you know, there's a big support for this. And so, it's not a matter of just saying, well, we're following state law. You know, that should never be the bare minimum as when we move towards ordinances. There should be long discussion and we should be able to make things work. Yeah, with, with e-commerce, with the hit of e-commerce and with the pandemic, everything moved to e-commerce in a faster pace than we thought it was. So, you're looking at empty real estate everywhere. You know, there is no, there is no demand for these places anymore because nobody's shopping at brick and mortar. So, people, if people are coming out of their houses, they want an experience. And I think, you know, you know, the street vending proves that. People want to spend money, but they want to spend it in a way that they enjoy it. So, yes, we can regulate it. You know, we can, we can ban street vending in certain locations, food vending in certain locations. And we can open up certain areas to do so and we can meet a, a, a healthy line where everybody is at play, right? And that's, you know, I think it would be beneficial if we keep working with Mr. Wright, who has experience all around the county, you know, with the, with this issue. So that we can have something that's reasonable, right? At the end of the day, how do we enforce something that we ourselves don't understand, right? That's the point of policy and that's the point of discussion. Can we really sit here and try to push something on people that we know is not feasible? But there is a lot of stuff that we can do. I have read through multiple, multiple ordinances, including Los Angeles and Ontario. And I think that we can have something comprehensible and we can continue to work with the health department to figure out how we can make it so that these people can get these permits and, and move forward from there.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, so it goes back to my question that I asked earlier and that is, what are we trying to accomplish here? And I have received complaints from the community that there are too many street vendors. And I just had a conversation with the business owner about a week ago, who was expressing something very similar to what I think it was Mr. Satino mentioned, and that is, we have businesses that go through the proper channels. And it's all in the name of regulation. And he was talking about, you know, specific equipment that's required to receive or obtain a county permit. And there are reasons why those are in place. So, I do have compassion for those in our community, such as the, the young woman that got up to speak. And so, what I would say as far as this conversation and identifying solutions, where I go immediately is, we do need to regulate this activity based on state, county and city laws. That's, I think, first and foremost. But then, there is an opportunity for us to create maybe a couple of channels. One, to explore how we, you know, the, there was a, a gentleman that spoke who is a street vendor. He talked about the raspados and the corn that he sells house to house. And he said that the permit process has been difficult. And so, it leads me to this other solution and that is, perhaps the city considers a process to help, you know, the application process, to help these applicants going through that process. And then the third would be, I think what Councilmember Hernandez mentioned, is to explore the possibility of grants or loans, perhaps from external sources or, you know, I don't know if we have the resources here at the city. But I'm just trying to get to, what is the problem and what are the solutions? And I don't think that we have exactly identified the problem. I think that by not enforcing, it's creating a problem. And that's why constituents have come to me and complained on the issue. So, I think immediately, we do need to go back to, what are the laws? And we need to enforce those laws. But we can also explore the opportunities to assist applicants through the process so that they have the support and, you know, maybe we make it specific to Baldwin Park residents. Because what we're seeing right now is no enforcement and people coming in from, you know, different places. And our, our constituents are not happy about that. So, I just want to start getting to identifying the problem and then identifying the solutions. And, you know, happy to work with our consultants, but let's start, you know, moving this along a little bit so that we can, you know, we're not just going in circles talking about philosophy of the issue.
Yeah, so I think the, I think we've kind of answered that question a lot and that's the point that there is no feasible way to follow this ordinance. So, are we going to sit here and enforce it, right? The whole point is that we're trying to create something that can be enforced because it's fair and reasonable. So, to say that we're just going to stop that and go and enforce something that we have been told multiple times since day one that is not feasible, I, I think it's, you know, I think it's a, I just don't think it's, I think it's a disservice on our part. You know, we have two very well-educated people on this topic and they themselves have agreed that this is not a feasible or easy ordinance to pass, you know, and I think that it's also, you know, personally, I hear a lot of support. You know, I hear a lot of support for street vending. And I know that we talked to different people. I know that certain individuals have politicized, not you guys, but other individuals have politicized this, you know, for personal gain. But there's also that. But other than that, you know, the majority of the city, you know, if these people didn't have support or money or dollars coming to them, they wouldn't be here the next day. And that's something to consider. So, personally, I don't feel comfortable enforcing something that doesn't make any sense.
So, mayor, then what I would ask as we identify the problem is, what in the existing ordinance is not feasible? Because I think that it was in place and we were enforcing it up until late last year, maybe early this year. So, let's really break it down to what is not feasible in that ordinance and start identifying solutions. For those, for those community members that do support street vending, sidewalk vending in our community, I think that we have allowed that, you know, again, based on county and state laws and we're trying to be in compliance. But I don't think we're trying to eliminate, you know, this activity. I think we're just trying to regulate this activity. And so, this way, it gives our residents greater assurance that if they go to any of these vendors, that they have the correct permits that the city has allowed and has approved, you know, that they are there. So, I don't think that it goes against people who support street vendors or sidewalk vendors in our city. I think we're just trying to create regulation around it.
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Wright, that's something that you can help us. You know, how does our, you know, what are some of the factors in our ordinance that make it, you know, increasingly difficult to reach that point of receiving that permit?
Well, I, there's, there's a couple of aspects to it, mayor. There's the aspect of whether or not it's financially feasible. And then it's the aspect of, is there an advantageous, sufficiently advantageous, advantageous opportunity for them to capitalize on the investment they make, right? So, on the front end, all the fees, all the training, all the costs, are those insurmountable? And we can address that as one issue. The next issue is going to be, are there sufficient opportunities where they can capitalize on that investment they make to get into the activity? And so, right now, because there's not a lot of enforcement going on, the issue is more about the barriers to entry. But if, even if we get past the barriers to entry, the next question is going to be, if we're actually going to talk about lawful activity, there's a lot of, there's a lot of regulations and prohibitions in there that aren't currently being enforced that are also going to be a barrier to lawfully engaging in this, in this opportunity. And so, it's, it's, it's going to be a twofold approach between identifying the barriers to entry and seeing if we want to compromise on those. And then looking at all of the prohibitions and regulations and seeing if we want to relax the standards there so that they can both afford to get into it and they have sufficient opportunity to, to capitalize on it.
And mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I, I would ask that this legal counsel, when you say that there are barriers within the ordinance, I would ask that you call out, are they state, are they county, or are they city barriers? And because obviously as a city, we only have so much control, right?
That's, that's a great point. I mean, obviously, they have to have a California seller's permit. They have to have the food handler's training. They have to have the Department of Public Health permit. Those are all beyond the city's immediate control other than something like a financial aid program. Obviously, the city could help alleviate it with a financial aid program. But the, those mandates are outside of the city. Now, the city has a business license requirement. You have the encroachment permit requirement for trucks. You have an operator's permit. You have a vendor's permit. So, there are some things within the city's control, but I would say that those are probably the minority of the barriers, not the majority of them.
Great, thank you. So, excellent. Yeah, so, could you, I mean, this is a discussion that's going to keep going and we are running out of time. But could you continue working with Ben? Give us a memo. What, obviously, whatever the state's doing is out of our control, but what the city can do. I, I mean, sometimes, I've been looking at some of our ordinances and we're asking people to be twenty-five to thirty feet away from a sidewalk, from a corner when cities like Los Angeles or Ontario are asking them to be five to 10, right? So, these are other issues that make it, you know, it seems like these are just kind of dingers, right? Where we can just ding these people for being within a certain area of a crosswalk, things like that. And I agree that there should be certain residential areas, certain commercial zones, where we're not going to have, you know, somebody standing there or walking around with the vending cart. But there are going to be other areas where we should. And so, then the question is, you know, are these requirements really make sense where somebody can be thirty feet away from here and then laterally over here and there's a whole formula you have to figure out to where you can place your cart, right? But that's, those are some of the issues that I'm worried about, right? Because when I'm reading these ordinances, the difference in, in kind of schematics is, is, you know, it's, it's obvious.
Yeah, mayor, I don't have a map of it, but I do, I assume that if you, you took a map of the city and you put your little circle around each of these protected locations and the exclusion zones that go with them, it would, it would result in a very, you know, limited area between ADA rules, your curb rule, your exclusion zones around, you know, schools, exclusive vending agreements in parks, bike paths, bus stops, fire hydrants, special events, intersections, driveways. You've got exclusion zones around all of those. And those, when you take all of those into account, that is, that's a lot of points throughout the city. And there's an exclusion zone around each of those points. And so, that's definitely, I, I don't know what that results in right now. That's, that would actually, you know, it'd be probably a little staff-intensive to, to figure out what that is. But definitely one of the things you need to consider is if you're going to lower the barriers to entry, if the intent of the city is to support the activity and allow it to operate lawfully, you're not going to have to just look at the barriers to entry. You're also going to have to look at where they're going to be allowed to operate and whether or not those places conform with your existing ordinance.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Yes, hold on. One more. So, how do, how does private property come into question? Because sometimes you go through other cities and you see that there's a food truck, you know, at a, like an auto shop that's already closed because they only do nine-to-five business. How does that affect an ordinance like ours?
Well, obviously, you can't mandate that it's allowed on private property. The question is going to be if those private property owners want to allow this activity. It would still require the permits and the exclusion zones would still be applicable. But in theory, there would be more opportunities on vacant parcels that aren't otherwise being utilized. You could also look into places that have large parking lots like, you know, shopping or malls, shopping centers, things of that nature. In allowing them to, with the permission of the owner, to operate on, on private property.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for your time and your expertise. And I look forward to seeing the memo along with, you know, if we could overlay some of that information with GIS and the mapping, that'll help us, you know, understand some of the policies. I think first and foremost, you know, as, as, as all, all of us have spoken, you know, there's not much that we can do at the state and the county at this moment. you know, there's not much that we can do at the state and the county at this moment necessarily. So we need to truly just focus on what the city can do at this time, right? Because that's the immediate change that we can. Now, we can't, not to say that we can't advocate for change or policies through our state and local representatives. But first and foremost, we need to look at, you know, what it means, as you mentioned, the financial part and the other piece, right? Because like I said, it's, you know, I want to be helpful to, to folks, but at the same time, I understand many businesses and I've gotten the calls from them, especially folks, you know, across the street from the Walmart area, where, you know, there's, they're blocking, you know, they're blocking the streets. And so that's an issue of mine, just, just primarily, is the accessibility of streets and so forth, you know, those that are setting up, you know, on private property. And many of these people, I've gotten two calls from two different private company, private property owners, that they're seeing the trash and they're only knowing it because they swung by in the evening. And they've told them to remove and go away. And so they're not there on, on the private property's permission. But it's also the thing that they mentioned to us was the liability that they now carry should something happen, you know, during the night and so forth. So that's a piece that, you know, if we could just look at that, because again, if something happens on private property or out on the streets, that's something that then we as a city, and this is where Robert and our other legal folks will look at, is, you know, what's the responsibility that the city has, right? So again, it's to make, you know, let's look, let's look at what we can do to help, let's look at what the barriers are first and foremost, right? And then what are the solutions to that? The city of LA obviously has passed an ordinance that works for them, and they have several thousand of folks there. So let's, let's look at that as a template. And then of course, understanding what the, what the solutions and the roadmaps to move forward. So that way we can hold people accountable with a lawful ordinance that's, you know, that's compassionate and that works for individuals. There's, I mean, I understand that, you know, and we may have to do it in some sort of scale based on, you know, based on, you know, the activity and the sales that they're, you know, generally promoting. Because it's, you know, at the same time, we have businesses that are infusing thousands of dollars and paying their, their annual fees to us and other things. And they're complaining. You know, it's not to say that I haven't visited a true rural place here in Baldwin Park or not, and there's some good stuff. But it's, again, it's, you know, how do we make them successful so they can then become, you know, another food establishment here in our city?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So at this moment, we will move to close session.
Thank you so much, everybody. If you would please exit the chambers, we are going to go into closed session. Thank you so much.
And Alejandro.
Alejandro too.
This should be getting long.
There's Monica. Alejandro, okay, Danny, I'm gonna make you host.
Okay, I'll let her in. There she is.
All right. You're the host now. I'll see you guys at seven. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
It's cold, right?
Lulu, can you hear me?
I can, thank you, yes. Are you in the closed session meeting?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Just making sure that it's not being broadcasted, right Mark? It's not being broadcasted?
No, this is the closed session.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Hi, my, my, what?